I have someone absolutely directing me. I'm looking straight at my computer.
Seven, all right, are we live?
Yeah, we are having a live.
All right, you're live.
We are, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a complete bad. I would like to welcome everyone to the November tenth, twenty twenty Columbia Borough Council Regular Meeting. I'd like to call to order, and could I have a roll call, please?
Council President Zink.
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman.
Here.
Councilperson Williams.
Here.
Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilperson Stevens.
Here.
Councilperson Littner.
Here.
Councilperson Burgard.
Here.
Mayor Look.
Do we have anyone from the Ministry of Health? All right. Could we please come up to the microphone so we can all hear?
This is the first time I've been here to pray. I've been here in your service and praying. So, I'm going to ask whether there's any special request for prayer. Anything specific? Am I open? Am I assuming all of your believers?
I'll say healing. I think that there's healing and restoration.
Healing and restoration? Restoration? Anyone else? Okay, let me introduce myself. I'm Reverend Missam Perez. I go to Ashley Tavern Apple Church of God in Christ, which is at one sixty-five South Fifth Street. My pastor is Pastor Rain Scott, and I am a member of Columbia Ministry of Health. So it's nice being here this evening and especially to pray. So pray with me. The more that God hears our pleas, the more that He listens. He will hear us. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you today for allowing us this time to call on your holy name. Heavenly Father, you are most gracious, God. I thank you for your grace, your unmerited grace and mercy that you give to each and every one of us. Heavenly Father, we bless your holy name. I thank you because we serve a living God who is the same yesterday, today, and tomorrow, who loves us truly with a Godly love. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us this time, allowing us to wake up this morning, and for us to gather to do your work, Heavenly Father. We just thank you, thank you, thank you. We can't thank you enough. You have been good that no matter what has gone on, you still kept us. No matter what has gone on, you blessed, and we thank you. So today, we ask you for a blessing today. We need a blessing from you, Heavenly Father, that only you can give. A blessing of healing, a blessing of restoration, a blessing of keeping us together as one, healing those things that we have been hurt about, God. Keep us together with our minds focused on you like only you can do, Heavenly Father. Without you, we are nothing. We are but dust. It takes you, God, to make the difference in our lives, to make the difference in the world, Heavenly Father. So we fought before you, God, giving you the honor and the glory in which you deserve. We come before you with our petitions, God. Hear us, God, as we cry to you, God, because you're all powerful, all-knowing, and you're everywhere at one time. Heavenly Father, your people are calling on you today. We need restoration for the hurts that have been done. We need restoration for the unjust things that have been done. We need restoration because we need to be kept together, for house invited against itself will fail. Heavenly Father, it takes you, God, the God of the universe, the God who has created the world, the God who has created each and every one of us, to be a specific part of the puzzle. Without all the pieces working together, it just won't work. Heavenly Father, touch us, God, and bless us, God. We need you today. Be with us now, with each and every one of us. You know each and every one of us, our petitions that we put before us, before you, because you know all things. And our goal here is to stay together, to compromise where it's needed, to love each other as you have decreed for us to do, that we love each other like we would love to be loved. Heavenly Father, touch us, God, and guide us. We need your wisdom, the wisdom that can only come from you, God. Touch each and every one in the hearing of my voice with a special touch of wisdom so that when we speak, we speak with kindness, we speak with love, and our goal is to do the things that we need to do justly. Heavenly Father, we give you the honor and the glory. We ask that you hear our petitions. Give us peace when we leave this place and safety on our way home, and we will always give you the honor and the glory in which you richly deserve. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge to the flag, Eric Nolte.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive information session. At six thirty PM on Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty, council held an information session for information only items from its solicitor and borough manager. Do we have any additions, deletions, or reorganization needed? I have none. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published? I have a motion by Councilperson Burgard, second by Councilperson Kaufman, to approve the agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that's good. Citizen comment, non-agenda items only. For this, there will be a five-minute time limit per person. When I call your name, please come up to the microphone, speak into the microphone so we can all hear, state your name and your address for the record. The first sign up I have is Lauren Vossen.
Lauren Vossen, six eighteen South Fourteenth Street. When I heard Mr. Burgard's comments and reference to our school taxes during last week's work session, I was immediately confused. In fact, I had to pause and re-watch quite a few times because I was positive that I had missed something. Otherwise, why would a councilperson just blatantly throw the school district and the town he serves under the bus for no apparent reason? But after re-watching a few times, I realized that that was, in fact, exactly what had happened. So, Mr. Burgard, I would like to speak directly to you first. I'll answer your question. You asked why no one is talking about the school taxes and how high they are, and the answer to that is simple. Everyone is talking about school taxes. Now, I do realize there may not have been any malice behind your comments, but I want you to know that I find it wholly irresponsible of you to attempt to deflect the attention off of the budget woes at this council at the cost of our district. The district does not have the ability nor the responsibility that this very council does to go out and bring business to town to increase our revenues. In that sense, the district is at your mercy, yet you won't hear any school directors complaining about your ineptness to do so at any of our budget meetings. The financial struggles of our small district are absolutely no secret. However, I would like to remind you that the board is coming off of a year with no tax increase, and that is largely due to the hard work and dedication of our business manager, Mr. Keith Ramsey, who does not get nearly enough recognition for the financial stability he has brought to the district, as well as our finance committee chair, Ms. Kathy Fong. I would suggest that council lean on your manager and financial advisor to bring forth solutions to your struggle. As a taxpayer, I would like to see you stop taking the merit and everything he says is fact and ask for data to back this claims up, make these people work for you. Where are all the studies and reports? I watch many of these meetings, and I often wonder where your information is coming from. Maybe it all happens during your information sessions, I don't know. One of my responsibilities as a school director is to advocate earnestly. I would like to take a moment to do just that. I'm not sure how many of you sitting here or at home watching are familiar with fair funding. In twenty sixteen, Pennsylvania enacted a formula to equitable leave distribute state education funding across all school districts. The formula starts with the overall number of students in the district, with extra weights being placed on such factors as the poverty rate and the number of English-language learners in the district. Charter school enrollment is another huge factor and a major cost to local districts. There are also district-based factors such as size adjustment for small rural districts, median household income index, and a local effort capacity index which calculates the ability of a district to create local tax revenue in comparison with that of the statewide median. Almost five years later, and only eleven percent of Pennsylvania's basic education subsidies is run through this equitable formula. The rest of the money, five point five billion dollars, is still distributed in the old inequitable way that it was before the fair funding formula was cast. Columbia Borough School District is underfunded by one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars per student, which works out to almost two point eight million dollars per year. Underfunded public schools educate fifty-one percent of Pennsylvania's students, seventy-eight percent of its black students, and eighty-two percent of its Hispanic students. I urge all of you sitting here to contact our state legislators and demand they act on immediate one hundred percent fair funding for all. Moving forward, I would like to see council and the school board establish a working relationship. As elected officials serving this small town, we should certainly work to hold each other accountable, but I believe we should also present a unified front when possible. We share so many of the same struggles, let's not use them against each other. Instead, I challenge all of us, council members and my fellow school directors, to work together to better serve those who we are elected to represent. I know that Borough Council and the school board used to hold joint meetings. I'm not really sure what that looked like, but maybe that could be a starting point towards forming a better relationship between the two. Thank you.
May I have a moment to respond?
Sure.
Is that appropriate? Lauren, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm grateful that you came to share your concern. In fact, we share the same concern, as do many people that I've heard from since I made that comment. You're correct. My comment wasn't made during a discussion about the school board or the school district. It was made out of context, and I could share why I made the comment if you would like, but I don't know if that's appropriate. But what it wasn't was not a referendum on the school board or the school district or the good folks at the school district, the staff, the teachers. I don't think that that's a problem at all. In fact, I'm grateful and proud of our school district and all the things that you folks do. I know several people on the school board. I'm grateful for the service that they give. I know it takes time, energy, effort, and passion and sacrifice. Very grateful for that. You know, I'll be the first to admit I don't know much about the school district and the workings and the goings-on, know the details. I'd like to learn more. One thing I did know, and the reason I brought that up is because I know that within the county, we are the second highest of all the school districts, all the municipalities that enter school middleage tax rate. And I think it's a great question. I don't know what the answer is. But I do believe that there are things that we could do. Councilperson Littner advised me of a House Bill seventy-six and a Senate Bill seventy-six that I'm looking into, and I know that she's been pretty engaged with the school board in the past. I would love to partner with Councilor Littner and maybe working with the school district to see what kind of options might exist, what pathways do exist. You're right, we should be working together. The whole borough needs to be working together. I pay it, you pay it, they pay it. And if we need to pay it, we're going to figure out why we're paying it so we can defend it. If you pay more and there's a good outcome from it, let's understand that as well. So I'm really grateful that you brought this up. Again, it wasn't a referendum on you guys at all. It was really in the context of this that we were talking about budgets and we were talking about public safety. And I remember when I first came on council three years ago, I'm still a rookie. We were given a booklet by the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. This is ridiculous. And I read the whole booklet, and one thing that stood out to me the most was this. Because I believe that to solve all of our problems in this borough, we need to change things in order to bring new blood, new life, new revenue, new business, new opportunity across the board. How that looks, I don't know. What the answer is, I don't know. I think we have to look at each opportunity as it arises, talk about it, vote on it, study it. But the thing I remember reading was this. In order to compel people to come to your borough, to your municipality, that's people who buy homes, people who invest, people who build businesses, people who visit. The two most important things that they consider are public safety, which I will always defend, and school districts. How does the school district perform? So that's kind of why I brought that up. I'm concerned about both of them, and I think that this is a great start to probably a very long, meaningful conversation ahead, and I'm happy to do that with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being so receptive.
I'd like to say one thing real quick. This year, I met Senator Almond down at Columbia Crossing, and he was answering questions, and that was the only question that I asked him. What is the state doing with our school system? I said, "We've heard it for years, years, and years. You're going to do something," and you know what he said? Didn't have a answer. So we need to contact them continuously to get them to do something because Columbia Borough citizens can't afford a twenty-six mil school system, you know? That's what I would say, really.
The next up we have is Frank Delver.
Thank you, Senator. Frank Delver, one thousand one hundred, Bill Pike. I'd like to follow up on my question I had last week about tax exempt properties, how much we took in in lieu of taxes.
Okay, I know the file has to pull it together yet. Sorry. I know the file has, the file of our bank manager has to pull it together yet, but we'll send it over to you.
He said there's going to be something in the pack, but it's, you know, okay. I'll wait till the next time. The tree commission, I see in the packet, they put in a request for five thousand dollars. I'm confused as to where the money went that was just donated. My understanding, it went to the tree commission. It did went to the general fund for the borough, did it? Why are they requesting five thousand dollars?
So we'll get to that later. The split of five thousand and whatever the full amount was was deposited into the account of the Shetree Commission for them to do further work. The borough has given them money almost every year to do work. And to be clear, the Shetree Commission isn't like given to a nonprofit organization. That's us budgeting for a board that is a board of the borough. It's like hard to come in and saying, "We want our annual allocation or the planning commission." They're not an outside board. They are a board of the borough. So we will look at how much we need to allocate for their operational costs and if we need to at all, but that's the difference that I see here.
Yeah, well, they do good work and they deserve the money, but I'm just wondering why they did a request if they had that in their line item or wherever that money went. And how does that money get spent? Do they have to request what they want to spend? Do they have to come to the borough and say, "Hey, we want this for such and such"?
No. Yeah, there, once that money is allocated to them, and that money was specifically allocated to the Shetree Commission in the quest from the state, they have the ability to, you know, to use that money as a basis there.
Okay. Next issue. The McGinnis property, I haven't seen nothing on any of the agendas lately, so I guess this is off the table?
It's not on the table tonight, but no, it's not off the table. It's still moving forward. We're still in negotiations with the trustees of the family.
Okay, well, McGinnis people, they're good people. They really did a lot over the years. I just would like to see an outside party buy that. I wasn't happy, I won't be happy if the borough ends up buying that. Okay, I'll move on with that until it comes up another time. I read somewhere where the borough is going to hire two positions or looking at hiring two positions in twenty twenty-one. Could you tell me what they are? Is it a planning commission manager?
So we are filling vacant positions, if that's what you're referring to, Frank. Jeff Helm left in January of this year. We are finally filling his position as a planning and zoning manager. So that is one position that's being filled that's part of our employee list. And the other one is we are asking permission to hire another police officer to fill a vacancy that's coming soon, so that's, yeah.
That's for twenty twenty, though.
Yeah, both of those are twenty twenty, yeah. So we're not creating new positions in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, once a replacement, I understand.
We will have that for the twenty twenty-one budget, so the individual won't be hired this year.
The police officer, the planning zoning manager, we hope to get on here in the end of November, early December.
Okay. And there was talk on raising the assessment on the property. How do you intend to do that? The county, to me, is the only ones that does that, unless you do it with a permit.
No, I think you might have misunderstood what was said. The only way the property values go up is either a county-wide reassessment of property values or if a property is substantially improved and permits, the building permits, et cetera, are sent to the county, the county can then individually reassess an individual property based on the improvements that are being made on that site. So if I have an eighteen-hundred-square-foot house and I want to expand it to a three-thousand-square-foot house and I get building permits to do that, we have to submit all those permits to the county. The county may reassess your property taxes based on the improvements you've made to your property. That's what we're saying.
Well, I was wondering, it just didn't sound that way, because I know the county is the only one that can do that. But I came back before you come here, and I brought this up at another meeting, that the permits whenever turned into the county, and there was a lot, a lot of assessment that should have been done. All you have to do is look at when there's a sale, see what they paid for the property, see what they sell for it, and you'll see what was put into the property. And there was many, many of them that people just turn their head and, well, go ahead. So now, we look at the court person, the average homeowner in the borough, taxpayer in the borough, they look forward to trying doing some work with their property, and I thought you were maybe, or even the county, is going to do a tax assessment, another new assessment, that here goes, now they don't have the money to do the work with their property. You're just agreeing your purpose. And that, to me, is just another way of taxing the people.
Right, that's not what I said. Again, individual properties may go up based on improvements done to that property by the property owner.
That I agree with.
And a county-wide assessment, which I don't know when the last county-wide one was done. It's probably been a few years. I was down in Florida, I think, when the last one was done here. So unless the county commissioners want to do a county-wide assessment, no, we will not globally raise the taxable value of properties across the borough. We can't do that.
I didn't think you could, but I just wanted to bring that up. You knew something that I didn't.
And so to be clear, Frank, as of right now, we are submitting all the building permits into the county. So I don't know if anything was done wrong in the past. I'm not saying it was, but right now, we are doing it correctly. We're sending the permits in.
Okay, I see you.
Yep.
Next, minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for October twenty-seven, twenty twenty? And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman and a second by Councilperson Stevens to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for October twenty-seven, twenty twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, presentation. You're up. We have a presentation this evening from the Shetree Commission on their annual report, and this is Amy Evans.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. Presentation may be a little overstated. I'm just going to speak from my notes about the documents that you have in great detail and that is available to the public as part of the packet this evening. So I was going to focus on two things tonight, and I still am, but I think in doing that, I'll also answer several of the questions that Frank had earlier. The first of those items is our budget request, which is for five thousand dollars, which is, I believe, the standard request that we've made for, I would say, the last five years, maybe four. And this is in turn leveraged by two thousand dollars in private donations typically and numerous volunteer hours to spread those funds into all of the activities that I'm going to be talking about this evening. The heart and soul of what we do in the Shetree Commission is really tree care and planting within the borough. Despite our constraints this year on in-person activities, we were able to hold three workdays that resulted in over eighty hours of volunteer time committed to the downtown area. We were able to enhance that through some informal outreach to property owners on various blocks, asking if they could maybe step up activities relating to weeding or care of their tree wells, and that was well received. So we can't take credit for all of the work that you saw, but we did have a hand in it. Another large part of tree care and planting is having our members, one of whom is a certified arborist, assess dead and were dying trees throughout the town and make recommendations on their care, and also performing spot work such as pruning or other limited maintenance that volunteers can do on an as-needed basis. In the last year or the period for the annual report, we also spent a little over two thousand dollars on pest and disease management, primarily here on Locust Street, in Locust Street Park, in River Park, and a few other areas within the borough. We also worked to ID planting locations. As we're aware, property owners who have lost trees or who are interested in expanding their replantings, we were able to do twelve of those in the last year in addition to a large number of trees that were planted through public work. So I do want to take a moment and just thank Jake and his crew for all of the work that they are able to help us with that greatly expands the ability of what we're able to do. And lastly, in this arena, we're also able to participate in PPL's Community Roots Program again. So in the spring, you'll be seeing pretty small trees at Columbia Crossing distributed to the community. Another item that Mark alluded to is that we are a borough of the board, so we do make decisions on permits relating to tree care and maintenance. In the last year, we looked at two requests for removal, which is actually rather low and pleasant to see, that for a change, two for pruning, and three requests for general assistance in that property owners often know that work is needed to be done, but may not be able to do it themselves. And in those instances, if our volunteers can't address that, they will do that. And we've also dealt with at least one complaint. And we've also dealt with at least one complaint, trying to informally facilitate complaints about recent trees between adjoining property owners. There are a number of planning activities that we've undertaken, uh, we have worked with the Borough Streetscape Planning Effort and the Planning Commission's effort to take a look at the Borough's comp plan. We have participated in input for removing and planting when blocks are rebuilt, uh, through the community development block grant process. We have, um, put considerable thought and effort into trying to find various solutions to, uh, properties, uh, within the borough that, the, the tree wells may be hosting as many weeds as trees, or where the brick inlays are also very weedy. Uh, we have determined that, uh, handling that through volunteer work is not a realistic uh, item for our volunteers, it's just too much. Uh, but we are exploring the development of incentive programs and friendly neighborhood contests to encourage, to positively encourage people to, uh, see the tree as their own and something to be proud of. Uh, the spotted lanternfly is of course on our radar, uh, this is the first year we've really seen those in Columbia in very large numbers. Unfortunately, there is no perfect answer when it comes to the spotted lanternfly, but we are keeping an eye on best practices and looking at ways to educate, uh, the community. I know people see them and are alarmed or don't know what to do, um, so we are looking at ways to make sure that people know what they are and that they are, um, free to step on them if they can catch them. Of course, we have also entered considerable planning around the bequests that was left to us by Ms. Clarissa Walcott. In honor of her lifelong commitment to teaching and to biology and the natural sciences, and also to the town, uh, we would prefer to invest this money in a low-risk option that would allow us to develop a long-term scholarship program for high school juniors or seniors who are, um, planning to pursue a forestry or a biology or, or a related natural science degree. Uh, these are initial thoughts of the board, we're still looking at whether that is the final, uh, the most appropriate final, um, solution for this fund, and how we can make that happen, uh, given the just financial administration of our account. Uh, we've also fielded a number of requests from state and regional board for programs, uh, somehow we've gotten on the radar and we sometimes get questions or, um, they'll profile this in, uh, reports, so that, that has been interesting to see us get a little bit of, uh, recognition on that circuit. Uh, we do do outreach, uh, education and membership activities, most of those occur through our sister fundraising arm, which is the Columbia Tree Society, uh, the Tree Society has thirty individual members and eleven business, uh, memberships, and typically, uh, each year we get anywhere from about eighteen hundred to twenty one hundred dollars in donations from those subscriptions, and that becomes part of the funds that the Shade Tree Commission administers. Uh, unfortunately, our Arbor Day celebration this year was postponed, uh, but the tree that is typically planted along with the celebration itself will happen in twenty twenty on, along with two, uh, additional trees, so a brief delay, but not a total, um, loss of the celebration in the town. Uh, we also maintain our Tree City USA designation, which is, um, an application process through the Arbor Day Foundation, and we are in year twenty-eight, we're looking forward to year twenty-nine, which is a long string of something that Columbia has to be proud of. And then we also have a number of educational materials in development for owners of new trees, uh, letting them know how to choose a tree for their spot and how to maintain one once they have one. Uh, there are some challenges noted in the annual report, um, most notably was the work that we're doing around trying to address weeds and property maintenance and tree well maintenance, and then we're also, um, trying to do a better job of following up on permit activity, uh, we don't always catch whether trees, uh, that were asked to be taken down, were taken down, items like that. Uh, looking forward, uh, we are planning to finalize a draft tree list and make, uh, some small adjustments to the Shade Tree ordinance, uh, which you would be seeing coming through, uh, probably spring of next year. Our goal is to make this document more informative, uh, a little bit more flexible, uh, in terms of placement, and then to allow greater species selection, particularly small trees that do well, under wires and in tight sidewalk situations that are common to Columbia. Uh, possibly the most exciting thing I have for you all tonight is, uh, we have finally been able to get momentum under producing a Shade Tree inventory for, uh, the borough. One of our members is very passionate about that and has experience, so we have met very recently with Mark and with Derek to figure out how to make that happen, and this will, um, when completed, be an incredible planning resource for our board and for the borough, and will help us lay a really strong foundation for our future activities. Uh, so those are the high points, uh, I do want to close tonight by thanking my fellow board members, Amanda Mount Con, Julie Lamer, Jack Gambi, and our unofficial member Josh Burke, and I would like to consider inviting anyone who's watching the Borough Council Meeting tonight, or anyone that's here tonight, to join us, um, we have an open position on our board, so we are looking for an additional member, and would also encourage anyone to volunteer with us as we, um, hopefully hold more, uh, frequent in-person workdays in twenty twenty-one. So, uh, again, but those are the high points, but I'm welcome to take any, or happy to take any questions.
I have a question. Um, you mentioned about needing a permit to remove a tree, and, and I'm sort of confused because I was never aware of that. So, like, I have a tree in my yard that gets, it needs to come out.
Okay.
I have to let you, I have to let the Shade Tree Commission know that I'm removing the tree?
Possibly. Uh, the Shade Tree Ordinance for the borough requires a permit for removal of shade trees, which are defined as a tree that overhangs a public thoroughfare right of way. So most, the vast majority of trees that are in your yard are not, uh, subject to this process. Trees that are between the sidewalk and the curb, or that are very close to the curb where there are the sidewalks, very likely would follow to that.
Would that also go for trees in, that cover the alley?
That depends, I know we have public and private alleys.
Public alley? My tree didn't go over the alley.
No.
It didn't.
Um, we'll, we'll look into that and see, I want, I need to look back and see how the language is, is written for that.
I just, I'm sitting here and I'm, I started to panic thinking, oh my gosh, I did something wrong, and I'm sure there's other people watching that are thinking the same thing, that they may not have known that, so we can get, maybe that could be one of our PSAs on our weekly update, but hey.
No, that would be fantastic.
Just as a reminder, because this is the time of year when, I mean, under Doug is busy like crazy, and so are some of the other people.
No, it's, it's not uncommon to have that gap in knowledge, and, uh, we, we do see permits that are retroactive sometimes, and, you know, that's just part of increasing our awareness of what we, uh, of the provisions of the code.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, I, I think it comes down to the education, and I think there's a lot of things here, especially related to the, the Shade Tree Commission, that we want to educate the public on, in addition to their great resource for even how to maintain a tree, and what's the right tree to plant in the right location, etc., so there's a lot of wealth of information within this board that we need to shine a big spotlight on, highlight here in this community, because it can be a great benefit to us as a whole.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mayor is here, Chief?
I do. I do. First of all, I am happy to announce that the Police Department has taken delivery of the first, uh, police vehicle through the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. Yes, it's parked at the rear door at this time, so when you get a chance and maybe exit the building, take a look at it. It's a, uh, very nice two thousand twenty Ford Interceptor. It has been outfitted with the, uh, lighting, uh, it needs to go and have the decals put on, so within the next week or two, uh, we hope to have it in rotation and on the street. So that's number one. Secondly, I'd like to, uh, let council and the public know that last week I submitted a letter of intent to the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association enrolling the department in the accreditation process. So I'm very excited, this is, been a long-term, uh, goal of mine, and it is going to be a tremendous amount of work, uh, we anticipate it taking maybe somewhere, uh, in the neighborhood of two to three years to accomplish, but, um, there are a lot of benefits to the accreditation program. Uh, it'll provide the department, uh, with a framework for evaluating agency practices and procedures, best practices. Uh, it will help to reduce agency risk and exposure to lawsuits, it decreases some liability, uh, insurance, uh, expenditures, and it also improves law enforcement, community relations, uh, among other, uh, benefits. So I'm very excited about that. Uh, the last thing, I just wanted to, uh, sort of put this, uh, put a note out, I believe at the next meeting, we are going to, uh, present a resolution for body-borne, uh, cameras. Uh, the, uh, you know, as stated previously and discussed, uh, we are in the process of submitting a, uh, grant with multiple other agencies to, regional effort, if you will, and a resolution is needed to assist with the, uh, matching grant at the state level. So, any questions about any of those items?
Yeah, I want the amount of the.
Yes, you know, Sharon, after, uh, you had brought up some points, uh, many weeks ago about, uh, warranties and some other, uh, expenses, um, if those could be included in the grant, so I went back and looked at, at that further, and what we found is all of that could be included. So, uh, once doing that, our, uh, total grant ask came to about eighty thousand dollars, I think it was seventy-nine thousand, so we'll ask half from the federal government and half from the state, at least that's our hope.
And then, and then we match some of the?
Well, our matching grant might, uh, actually be covered through the state grant.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
And then, but then our annual fee to maintain all this?
All that's included, for five years.
Oh, five years.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we're hoping.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes.
I'm, I'm still, I'm kind of floored that we got our first vehicle from Enterprise already.
Very exciting.
Um, have we received the one that we ordered?
No.
Months ago?
No, we still have not. Uh, we ordered one back in May, I believe it was.
Yeah.
Yes, and we still have not taken delivery of that. So I, I think that's a testament to the program.
Yeah, I, I'm sitting, I'm like, I'm sitting here five days and I don't even know what to say, that's.
Yes.
Incredible that we could have one.
I was just as excited as you were, uh, when I got the news last week, so I assure you.
Well, and I was still sitting out there when I walked in, and I thought, oh, what vehicle that is?
Well, it, it's a testament to the, our enterprise system, but I'll, I'll go a step further and say it's a testament to working together with other agencies, because this was a vehicle that East Hemfield Township had ordered through Enterprise, the same system, and, um, through some, some changes in their, in their program, they didn't necessarily need it this year, and so because it was already one that they had begun the process on, we approached them, said, hey, could we take over that one and bring it to one of ours, and they said absolutely, so we were able to work with East Hemfield and get one of the vehicles that they didn't need this year as part of their program and, and bring it to us, so it, it really is us, working this program, which is, is, is showing its benefit already, but two, working together with our neighboring communities to, to ensure the, the process and, and improve the safety of this community.
And we are still using our local contacts for the, um, decals and all that stuff?
Uh, actually not, uh, no, we are using a firm out of Mannheim, yes.
All right. Yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Um, old business, can you consider advertising ordinance amending the code of ordinances? Um, I have a problem with doing, sorry. Could I have a motion to reconsider advertising the ordinance amending the code of ordinances? And a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Stevens, and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to consider advertising the ordinance amending the code of ordinances. Uh, we had talked about this during the work session, um, we all see in the, in the executive summary that this change is needed because of tense conflicts, um, with regards to the fees, uh, being listed specifically in the ordinance, um, Evan told me that he has one, uh, something else he wanted to change, so I'm going to turn it over, you can explain that, or put it up on the screen here.
Yeah, so if everybody can see the, the screen up there, I know people that will probably, probably can, but, uh, the last sentence of, uh, section one dash nineteen there, um, what we are going to do is take the language that was added regarding filing an appeal and put it at the end of the sentence. Um, it just makes a, a lot more sense and makes it a whole lot clearer, uh, when it says, any person who receives a violation for a violation of this article may, within thirty days, admit the violation, waive a hearing, and pay the fine in full satisfaction of the amount as indicated on the violation ticket, or file an appeal, is the language that we would like that to, to say. Inserting that file an appeal in the middle of the, the list of things, it's something, someone would have to do in order to kind of satisfy the ticket amount, um, it just seems to make a lot more sense, that structure, anyway. So, that doesn't really change any, you know, anything materially in the, in the, um, in the ordinance, but it just makes it read a whole lot better, make it a whole lot clearer for, for somebody who looks at this a year from now, or two years from now, or five years from now. And then, the other one would be down in the new section, uh, G, um, where we set up the Code Compliance Appeals Board, and at the end of that sentence there, what we would just say, just to explain that a little bit better, uh, would say, you know, shall be set, the recipient shall appear before the Code Compliance Appeals Board, which shall consist of the borough manager and two members of Borough Council, um, as had been discussed earlier, so, um, that, you know, those two changes, just to, just to add, um, a little bit of explanation there and make sure that, that everybody knows, because the Code Compliance Appeals Board hadn't existed before, so we want to make sure we know what that's supposed to be. Um, so, that's, those are the only two changes that I had, like I said, it really doesn't change anything in this ordinance as it was presented in the packet, but I feel like those are important changes before you go to advertising to, uh, to make sure that you're, you're comfortable with what's, what's in here and what's being set up. You know, like Heather said, this is a result of having fees directly in this ordinance and it being difficult to change, and also those fees in the ordinance conflicting what's in your fee resolution. Um, so, after this is taken care of, all of these fees will, will only be down in the fee resolution, and therefore, if somebody has a question about how something, how much something will cost, they can, it'll simply be, um, you know, they can hand them one sheet and have everything right there.
No, um, section one dash nineteen, we're only removing the file and appeal to the end, um, we also need to add a the, where it's waive a hearing and pay the fine in full satisfaction of the amount.
Current.
Sorry, I don't mean to be picky, actually.
You should be.
It's stumped, I stumbled on that.
Code, code writing, it's, it should be picky because it, you know, you're dealing with things that people are required to do, so.
All right.
Yeah.
So let's get that, we're adding it in there, and, all right, um, so we would like this advertised, and because this is the first time doing that since we've got one here, I just want to make sure I understand how this process works now. So now we'll advertise it. So, now, we'll advertise it, and then at the next meeting, we will vote to...
Adopt it.
Adopt the ordinance.
Yep. It has to be advertised, because this is just a, a regular ordinance change, not, you're not amending the zoning ordinance or the zoning map or anything like that. It only requires, it's required to be advertised once in the local newspaper, seven days prior to the meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll probably, I mean, I can't imagine we couldn't get it in in time for the twenty-fourth meeting, but if not, it'll just be the next voting meeting in December.
I just want to make sure that we all knew that, that this is the first time we're going.
Yep, absolutely.
The ordinance. All right. There is a motion by Councilperson Stevens and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to consider advertising the ordinance amending the code of ordinances, all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, let's get that advertised.
Thank you.
New business, can I have a motion to approve the application for payment number one to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company, the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, or twenty-seven cents.
Seven.
And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the application for payment number one to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. This is for the Shawnee Drive, and aside from this, the next item here, this is the full amount, correct?
Yeah, so, the next item is a change order.
Is the change order. The two together represent the full amount.
Yeah, procedurally, we should probably move on the change order first, because the application for payment includes the change order, it's not a big deal.
Okay, we are going to table this motion for now. Could I have a motion to approve the contract change order number two to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars?
Seven.
And a second. All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the contract change order number two to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. It looked like this was to remove some extra trees.
Yeah, this was for additional tree removal. The, the way that this project was bid, we did not bid trees individually. The, the restoration of the stream was built as a lump sum, and the plan that was developed by Land Studies noted the trees on the plan to be taken down with an X, so that was what was bid as part of the lump sum. When the contractor got in there and started laying the banks back and started to make this thing work, what we discovered is that we needed to take the top banks back a little bit more, and that was starting to expose some roots of some larger trees. So, we could have saved some of them, but we were concerned that they were just going to die anyway. So, basically, went ahead and cleared out any tree that we thought might be in danger of, of either impacting the stabilization of the stream banks, or could have been at risk for dying down the road. So, that's where the change order came in, to remove those extra trees. That's the only additional cost that you're going to see on this project, and I think to answer your initial question, Heather, this is a, this is the first application for payment. They are requesting full payment for the project, but we're going to, we're going to retain five percent for our contract documents until the spring to make sure everything is fully established. But the, the project is substantially complete, less a couple of plentiful items, most notably, we got a couple of squares of sidewalk that need to be replaced that were damaged on Fourth Street there. And again, we just got lots of grass grow, so.
It looks gorgeous.
I'm happy, everybody's happy with it, I'm very, very pleased with how it turned out. I think it's what you approved in that area.
I don't know if anyone else saw, but, but it's gorgeous.
If you read through the council brief that I did, you can see, I spent some time on trying to outline how the cost share breaks down between the two entities, so if there's any further questions on that, go ahead.
All right, does anyone else have any other questions or comments or concerns for there? So, first, we're going, we have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the contract change order number two to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. So, now, we're going to untable, how do I say that? I'm going to untable the initial motion...
It's when a motion take off table.
...by Councilperson Fitzgerald and the second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the application for payment number one to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that carries. Next, could I have a motion to consider advertising ordinance adopting rules and regulations for the Civil Service Commission?
Seven.
And a second. Second. All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Regard and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to consider advertising the ordinance adopting rules and regulations for the Civil Service I want you to take this, I mean, I know from reading it, it's required for us when we're establishing the corporal position, but you can probably explain it better than I can.
Chief, do you want to?
This will be a host to bringing to finality a plan that was put in place maybe about two years ago, where as the department is being restructured, so we're looking to add two additional ranking positions. In the past, there were four sergeants, we currently have three, so I'm going to maintain the three sergeant number and add two corporals. What this is going to allow us to do is the, we, we will look at restructuring the department into platoon-type of organization, where the sergeants will oversee two squads. When the squad, the sergeant is not working on, the corporal would be the officer in charge. And according to our labor attorney, this change in language for the civil service rules and regulations is required in order to acknowledge that position and allow us to move forward with the testing.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or anything? I, I mean, I read through it, it seemed pretty straightforward, it's just making that change to the language to be like ranking officer rather than the specific name, the specific title. So, we'll advertise this at the same time we advertise the other one?
Yep.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Regard and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to consider advertising the ordinance adopting rules and regulations for the Civil Service Commission, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, get that advertised. Next, could I have a motion to consider the resignation from Officer Burrell?
Seven.
And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Linder, a second by Councilperson Stevens to consider the resignation from Officer Burrell. Anyone have anything to add on this?
Let's simply say, I just wish him well in his, his new endeavors. There might be a little bit of jealousy here. He is, he is leaving the police force altogether and, and taking on, taking on a whole new career, and I just wish him well.
So, we're just accepting it?
Yep.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Councilperson Linder and a second by Councilperson Stevens to accept the resignation from Officer Burrell, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We wish him well. Next, could I have a motion to, to consider directing staff to hire a police officer to replace Officer Burrell?
Seven.
Second. I have a motion by Councilperson Regard and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to directing the staff to hire a police officer to replace Officer Burrell. So, anyone have any questions on this? I think this will, I think the question we had before this, we, we worked through the Lancaster, like, is there a consortium or something?
That is correct.
To the Civil Service Consortium?
Right. Most, most agencies, police agencies of the county participate in the Lancaster County Consortium. The initial two phases of testing take place in September through that process, so the written exam and physical agility were completed, I think, the second weekend in September. So, we now have an eligibility list and are ready to move forward with the additional phases of testing.
And do we have, does it look like we're going to have the three, like, because we need...
I'm hopeful.
We need to have three, right? That's what the borough manager says? We have to have three to pick from?
We should have three, right, to choose from.
All of this, I, I do have, I saw in, in the hiring plan, in, in the, in the packet, that we would be, then in the short term, we would be pulling back Angle for patrol, correct?
That is correct. That's an unfortunate necessity. Officer Burrell is on a two, a three officer squad, we cannot go below three. There are safety concerns, just pure management of the schedule makes it necessary to have no less than three. I do not have any additional personnel, so at this point, we will need to reassign Officer Angle back to patrol until such time that we can place the new officer on a squad.
And I'm trusting that, that difficult conversation has been had.
It most certainly has. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting recently with the interim superintendent, it was the mayor, borough manager, Mark Stivers, and I, and we discussed this very topic at length.
I just didn't want this to be the first, anyone at the school was hearing it, or I just wanted to, I mean, I didn't think it was, but...
It's my understanding the school board members are also aware.
Were you also aware?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. Didn't want to blindside anyone. Yeah, that is, I mean, it is unfortunate, but it's what we need to do to... And how long do we estimate that it will take to get someone up in?
Typically, it's about sixteen months.
All right. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Regard and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to direct staff to hire a police officer to replace Officer Burrell, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next, presentation and acceptance of a report. Can you make me a document? Anything here?
I have the report this time.
Thank you. Buyers?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Legislation, I do not. Parks and Recreation? What?
I'm sorry.
What?
Are you all right?
Oh, did I screw up?
No, no, no. No, I did.
Oh, okay, good. I mean, not that you screwed up, good that I didn't. Parks and Recreation, Councilperson Williams.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came to our very successful Halloween event.
Excellent.
And we had a really good time, lots of people came, so I'm hoping this can be a, a yearly event, something to look forward to. We are moving on to Christmas, the holidays, I guess I should say, and sponsoring a, as I'm sure you've heard, the Gingerbread Event in the Market House on December fifth. Already the, we've already received a lot of applications, entry forms, and so I expect a really great participation. You'll be able to go to the Market House and, and see what, how creative your, your neighbors are, as far as Gingerbread House has gone. And I'd also like to, to report that the next Parks and Recreation meeting is rescheduled for November sixteenth. It was originally scheduled for the twelfth, but there is a meeting conflict that night. That's it, thank you.
All right, personnel.
Okay. I wanted to ask if we have anybody applying for the open hear positions and where that's being advertised?
So, we've had one, one application come in so far, we, we put it on our Facebook page, and it's on the website, but we're going to, I forgot your email, and thank you. We're going to highlight it again, because when we cycle things through the, the website, sometimes things get buried down, so we're going to highlight it back and put it back on top again.
Okay, and what will happen if we don't get like a whole board at one time? Will we still have to do it until, or will they sit in? How will that work?
I'll, I'll talk this through with Evan Moore, but right now, the plan is to have council continue until we have at least five members to constitute a full board.
That could take a while, I guess.
I'm hoping not too long, but, but yeah, it, it could be another couple of meetings.
Okay, and do we have applications for November yet?
Yes, we do. It looks like...
And what will the date of that be? Eighteenth? When is that?
No. Yeah.
So, we do?
Eighteenth.
Thank you.
Yes. So, I think at this point, we have two applications, I, one for sure, we're vetting the last one right now to make sure it needs to come before you, but it was most likely to have two applications for that meeting.
And we'll know a little ahead, so we can kind of review and look at the property.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to draw up business, Sharon, you're the liaison for the board. You know anyone that draws business?
I do not know anybody that's jumping up and down looking for the position.
What kind of qualifications would a member of the Harvard...
Well, I think we have to have, again, an architect, right?
But are there, are there just resident?
Just residents?
Yeah.
Well, it's, residents who live...
Non-professional?
Residents who live within the district. It's, it's, per our guidance, we have to have an architect, a building code official, and a real estate broker. But if you guys remember, we didn't have an architect for years. It doesn't, didn't invalidate the board, it just, it, the full complement would equal all of those positions. So, we are looking now to, to attract a new architect, but I think that provided great value to the reviews that we had done. But for the citizens, it's, you have to have own property within the historic district boundary to be just a citizen at large on that board. The other positions do not have to be residents of the borough.
When you said five, you're hoping to get five, would that be five residents, or would that include an architect and broker, or how would that work?
If we can get an architect in that time, that would be fantastic. If not, we could... If not, we could constitute the board with not a full complement of the professionals. So, we could get four residents in the historic district and a broker. And if the broker happens to live in the district, great, but that's, we need a minimum of five members to have the board.
And what about a consultant, like Suzanne West?
I talked to the PHMC. That's a nice addition and it is, it's, we have that listed in our code, but it's not required for the board itself. So, it'd be good, I'm trying to find one. The one solution that the PHMC, which is the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission, has offered is that there are many consulting firms out there that can offer this as a paid service that we could bring in. The only thing with that is that obviously comes with a fee. So, we'd have to look at, can we afford paying a professional to come in and do that, or do we look for another option? Those are the things that we're looking at right now.
Did Suzanne have some kind of stipend for doing what she did?
Yes.
Fairly low, though.
Yes.
For her knowledge that she brought to this was, I don't know that we'll match that, really.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Frank, so...
Sharon, what's the status of the Borough that we had? I never remember seeing council accept his resignation.
I think he was thinking about it, right, Mark?
The broker you said, Frank?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff Sibbert has not fully resigned yet. It sounds awkward to say it that way. He submitted his resignation. We met with those who submitted, asked them to either decide to move their resignations forward, which three of them did. Jeff decided not to. So, he has put his resignation on hold to see with the reconstitution of the board how that comes together. So, my hope, Jeff, is that he decides to stay with the board and stay on, and that's one less position we have to find. And yes, I've told him that directly.
All right. Public Works of Poverty, Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Graham for his October reports. Did you have anything that you wanted to highlight, Suzanne?
Riverport, I think we talked about this a little bit in the last meeting, but the PA outdoor courts were heading back, and I believe it was around middle of October, and it was like a four hall down there, and it worked for three days, all handwork, no equipment or nothing, and, you know, just, they mulched the trails of the Borough crews heading back last winter, removed a bunch of invasive species down there. You could fix some of the split rail fence, did some painting and stuff. I mean, they were just, it's amazing how much work they did. Oak was rubbing out and stuff all for the three days, so, yeah, they really did a great job for, you know, just all handwork. So, definitely that was worth mentioning.
Thank you. As far as the Market House project, as of last week, they were talking about developing a punch list to finalize the building, and I'm hoping within the next few weeks, that will become a reality.
Yes.
And so, now they're starting to hammer out the details for the vendor agreements, the Gypsy Kitchen Restaurant, and facility rental. Anything else I missed?
No, we're finishing up some of the exterior finishes on the building right now. They're, they're removing some of the loose bricks that had deteriorated over time. They're getting those fixed. They're, they're finishing up the work and the repair on the doors and some of the windows on the outside. And I'll say again, I know I've said this before, but if you, if you take a chance to walk, go over there and stick your head in and look, the floor that the mason did and the work that they put on that is just outstanding. It just looks great. It, it's, you can see it in the plans, you get it in the, in the drawings, but when you see it come together and you see the kitchen, the way it's laid out, and how the seating's gonna work now, and I'm certainly, some of the stands are in for some of the vendors, and you start seeing this, and I keep telling people, I just, I just can't wait to see it full of people and life and energy now, because it really is coming together. So, I'm very excited to see this, this project come to conclusion.
I have a question. What's the intent, Mark, to open it and then close it, and then reopen it again? Or just open it and it will stay open and gradually get more vendors and all that?
So, great question, Frank. The, the timing right now is to open the restaurant portion only this winter. We're still working out the contracts and the details of that, but that's, that's the plan. In meeting with CHI, they felt like it'd be very difficult to open a farmer's market going into wintertime, and they want to launch it in the spring. So, it's a, it's not an open and close and reopen, it's an open, a partial open, and then a full open in the spring, and once we open in the spring, then it shall remain farmer's market year-round and the restaurant a year-round for the number of days they're open.
I have a question here, I guess, hoping Jake, you can answer this. You know, because I was reading through, I was reading through the report, and I was especially reading through the list of the paving projects that were completed by Borough Crews this year. I had someone ask me, and I didn't see it on the list here, so I'm gonna ask, who paved the 600 block of Chesnut?
UGI.
UGI did.
It was part of their restoration from doing a bunch of cuts in that block.
Okay. I, I, I think the person that asked me was concerned because they paved it curb to curb, but there's a considerable amount in that block that are, the gutters are still brick, and there's no like actual curves and, you know, it was like, okay, so we paint, so I just wanted to make sure that wasn't us that was paving it just to have it end up breaking off because of the...
No, that was UGI on the report, so. Free street.
Free street? Sounds good. Any other questions? All right. Got that. And now, on to safety, Councilperson Laguardia.
Thank you, President Zink. In your package, you'll find reports for the Columbia Borough Police Department, the Fire Department, for SPEMS. We also wanted to make note, which you're probably already aware of, that there was a discrepancy on the Columbia Borough Police Department, particularly the parking ticket fines. The, the total sum was wrong. It has been corrected. It should be in your packets, or you should have, had in your bin. I wanted to ask Mark if you could make sure that that gets posted somehow online, either an updated packet gets loaded or something for people to download. Also, in your package, you'll find the codes compliance report for October 2020 and the zoning and planning, YMOC report for October 2020. That's all I have.
Did anyone have any questions on that? Staff reports, comments, and announcements. Evan, it's all you, but...
I do not have anything really additionally to report. We are certainly working through quite a few things with the agreements with the Market House, a bunch of other things. Mark and I, one thing that we will be working on here very shortly is making some very necessary revisions to the yard waste agreements with other municipalities, so that way we can actually get them out on time this year, so hopefully we can have them signed and, you know, send them out by the end of November, so other municipalities can get them signed at their December meetings and have them in place for January 1st, ready to go. So, that's one thing we'll be, we'll be working on here in the next couple of weeks, so...
Derek? Did you join us tonight?
I, I don't really have much else to add. I think we covered it all in the property report and talked a lot about showing you running. That's our, I think that's our big highlight at this point. So, we're continuing to work on some 2021 projects, doing the design process, and again, I meet monthly with Mark, Randy, and Jake and keep them on speed on, sharing what's going on, so, anybody have any questions for me about anything we're, I'm working on? Happy to...
I have a question though. Amy was talking about the, the tree, the shade tree...
The tree inventory.
Yeah, the inventory, I was looking for the word. The inventory, is that something that we can put in the CS data then too?
Can you do that?
You are 100% correct, Derek. So, we currently, I actually talked to, yeah, we talked about this on Friday, and I've already sent an email to our software folks. CS Davidson doesn't currently have that capability, but it's just a layer. It's not like the program can't do it, we just need to add, add a layer there. So, what I'm gonna talk to the guys about when I get back to work is basically being able to add a tree layer as a pin, and then we can import whatever attribute data they want, so they can select a pin, it's a red maple, that's a pine tree. We can put fields in there for date planted. We can, we can do just about anything for that, so I'm gonna happily work with Amy on that and find out exactly what the commission needs, and we can work with the building, but the data can be input into the program through a cell phone, an iPad, anything with an internet connection.
I completed my cycle of CS data, and I really like it. I was playing with it one day, and I really like it.
Great. Well, again, we, Mark and I also talked about making sure that everybody has a little crash course on, on what it can do, and especially some of the areas, like I wanna make sure that everybody knows how to look at the construction projects, you can see those inspection reports as they come in in real time. That's probably the, the most interesting thing to a lot of people think, is the progress of the public works projects.
So, I was just, I was just enthralled watching, I was just enthralled looking at the sewer schematic, I'm aware of all of this. I just found that thrilling.
And we continue to add data layers to it as we see need for these, this additional information. This is, to me, is Heather's leading to it. It's a bit of a, I'll say toy, but I don't mean it that way. It's an exciting tool to use that we can get on and have quick and ready access to a lot of information very quickly, and it really helps when you're doing some review and analysis, and you're trying to evaluate a new project coming in, or you're looking at something. This is a great source of data to look at all that information in one place, and you can turn different layers off and on, and you can begin to see an impact and how this changes. The tree layer, in talking with Amy and Julie, two members of the board, on Friday, this has been a goal of theirs for many years now, and they initially had a sign-up on CS Adam to do this, but it never materialized, so we're putting together a plan now to get the, the application built, so that we can get volunteers to go out and look through, walk each street, label all the trees. If you're using your phone or handheld device, you can literally take a picture, drop a pin on the map, and it'll, it'll get you within a few feet of the location of that spot, so it'll fairly accurately locate all the, the trees, and we can keep going with this. We can locate other items on here as we, as need for data layers on here, but that's, that's the idea, is to keep using this and expand this tool for, for the borough.
All for using of technology tools that we have and can expand. Secretary Trager?
So, I have just, just one update tonight, and this is a testament to this, this community. I did something this weekend that I've been, I've been planning to do for a very long time. Now, there's, there's two sides to this confession, is, and it is a confession. One, what was I thinking? I'm not as young as I used to be. Two, what a beautiful trail we have. So, I decided on Sunday that in my young sprightly self, I would ride the trail to Falmouth and back. Back when I was 25 and 30, I wouldn't even blink twice. I'm still on Advil, recovering from that attempt at youth. But I just wanna encourage, if, if you haven't gone out, what a, what a phenomenal resource. I know the whole thing is in Columbia, but wow, what a gift we've been given to have that riverfront area and that trail, and to do a small section of it, to do parts of it, dear God, if you wanna do all of it, get somebody to meet you at the other end, don't, don't be like me. It was packed, and many times you had to stop and go around crowds of people and slow down and look, and you see people talking, and you hit Chickies Rock, and there was probably about 18 to 20 people up there climbing and rappelling on the rock, and young families out walking, and that's all dads with kids and doing these things, and, and what, what hit me is that, that's really the sense of community and driving that we wanna see around here. So, I just wanna say again, what a, what a gift, and it's not just the rail trail. You look at some of the other parks and some of the other natural areas we have here, and, and this is a goal for us, is to keep expanding it out and seeing that grow, because we have a, a great resource here in our open space and recreation areas, and to see them so heavily used just does, does my heart of world good, so. Thank you to Hope and her team and the borough, and everyone who has seen this as a vision and to move it forward. It's just a fantastic gift.
You should have called me, I'll come up here, Sharon.
Ah, somebody should have. Good grief, house crime. No, I made it, made it fine. There was, there was pain in Advil involved, I promise you.
All right. Boards, commissions, and committees will acknowledge the Shade Tree Annual Report. And next week is the Planning Commission Meeting on the 17th. At 6:00 PM is the Working Meeting, and 7:00 PM is the Regular Meeting. Next Wednesday, the 18th, is HAR. And the night, next Thursday, the 19th, at 7:00 PM, is a budget meeting.
A budget meeting, correct.
And that will be possibly our final look at the budget and voting to advertise it.
Yep.
Possibly. And that's the 19th.
Yep.
HAR was at 7?
HAR was at 7, yes.
Is that the date is that?
That is Wednesday, the 18th, here. And there will not be any large words that I'll need to learn, correct?
No, I'll tell them all before.
Borough Council comments, we'll just round the horn here, Councilperson Burrell. Well, Kaufman? I have one thing for you that I just remembered that I didn't ask you before. I had a resident send me a question. I know this is not something that's new, it's, it's an issue all over town, but there is concern with speeding on South 8th Street, the hallway from the highway to Locust, in both directions. I did advise that, because they ran away, Jean ran away, said, all the neighbors would wanna put speed bumps on, on South 8th, and I said, you know, we would have to do traffic studies, please get me a letter signed by the neighbors to let us know what you guys feel problems are, what you feel a solution would be, and, you know, we will get working on that. But I wanted to alert you that there is, there does seem to be a concern, but again, there's a concern of speeding all over town.
Yeah, you know, we talked about resurrecting the, resurrecting the meeting with the safety committee, group safety meeting, which had also suggested other changes, and we'll do that sometime soon. So, we'll be on our consulting from, and as well.
And, I mean, it, maybe it's as simple as, you know, having, I know the officers are busy, but paying a little more attention to speeders in some of the areas that they wouldn't normally be patrolling. that they wouldn't normally be patrolling, it seemed to be an issue.
Who did you want to refer to forward that information to, the person who...
Sure, I will. I will.
Heather, good point. I'd like to draw that up. Because I'd like to ask the chief, if we have a speeding, if like it shows a speed that we're traveling, do we have one of...
We do. Early down on Front Street.
We do have a...
We do. We have one posted right now on Front Street by the bridge.
What's the procedure for a taxpayer to get that entered every?
Just give them a brief, let them know what the concerns are, and, you know, I can look into maybe having a group do that area. If anybody else can do a analysis of the speed, you know, for some time, and, and, and use that for more on.
Does it record anything? It won't record speeds after a cruise, or anything?
It records that, yes, yes.
Plus, you have the dollar, we can see, we can see what speed you're traveling.
Right. It's also used as a traffic calming measure. So it lets the driver know how fast you're going, if you're exceeding speed, or whatever. Right.
And I think our new vehicle has a hitch on the back. You could tow it with it, so added benefit.
Nice. All right. Councilperson Linder?
I just have one other question on the HARB applications. Like if someone applies and we have an applicant, does council decide? Or are they just automatically on? I mean, how does that procedure work?
No, thank you. No, the council must decide. These are all board appointments by Borough Council. So I, I will bring a list of names to council, and those people will then be reviewed and appointed on to, like we did with Jeff Seibert. He was appointed by you guys to sit on HARB. Any and all boards will, will follow that procedure, and we'll bring names forward as we get them. For HARB, right now, we're trying to build an entire board, so you guys can, can appoint a board in one shot. If we find the need to expedite that, we will. But procedurally wise, you do appoint them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilperson Stevens?
Oh, yes, I just have one thing, not pertaining to anything here tonight, but today is the Marine Corps birthday, founded in 1775.
Thank you for your service, Howard.
Thank you. Councilperson Williams?
Oh, no.
Williams? All right. Announcement of the next meeting at 6:30 PM on November 24th. Council will hold information session to receive information from its partner manager and solicitor prior to the regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. But I have a motion to adjourn.
So...
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Linder, second by Councilperson Stevens, to adjourn the meeting at 8:33 PM. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that's all our books.